Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for Friday, June 3, 2011. We're here in the John Farrow Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. And thank you, we're starting a little bit late due to our ad hoc committee on economic reinvestment and recovery. Want to welcome all the members of the public who are here with us today. Welcome to our chambers, and we have a very exciting set of presentations here, which we do every Friday for notable dates and individuals and organizations that are making a difference in the life of our city. Today, we have two such presentations. A delegation from Mongolia will be with us today, but also, this is the week in which we will be celebrating a month of Pride, and the mayor will be joining us shortly for that, and we appreciate everybody who is here for that presentation as well. Want to thank those council members who are here on time. Council members Alacon Cardenas, Corretz, Krikorian Parks, Rosendahl, Wesson, and Zine are here. We're just awaiting one more person for quorum. Ms. Perry is excused today, but that means we are awaiting council members Han, Wezar, Labanj, Reyes, and Smith, who are late. They'll please make their way down as soon as possible. Again, that's council members Han, Wezar, Labanj, Reyes, and Smith. Want to thank Channel 35, which broadcasts these meetings live throughout the city's cable system. It's also rebroadcast in the evening for your convenience. We're, of course, available in person, and not just here in council chambers, but remotely through our Van Nuys and San Pedro City Council Chambers. Should that be closer to your home or place of work, you can save some time and some traffic and remotely not only watch the meetings, but testify from those chambers. We're also available on the Internet for your convenience at lacity.org, where we have live streaming webcasts of our council meetings, and we archive all of our past council meetings for your convenience, as well as putting our council agendas there and our meeting times for our committees. Finally, if you aren't close to a telephone or a computer, sorry, television or a computer, you can use your telephone and call 213-621-CITY and listen into our council meetings. That's 213-621-CITY. And you can listen into our council meetings or any of our committee meetings as well. Again, thank you to council members Alacon Cardenas, Corretz, Krikorian Parks, Rosendahl, Wesson, and Zine. If I could ask the Sergeant-at-Arms assistants for tracking down council members Han and Wezar, Labanj and Reyes, and council member Smith. As soon as we have one more, we will have a quorum. We'll run through the agenda quickly, and then we will go straight to our presentation for Pride. So hang on for another minute, and we'll hopefully get another council member, and then we will be able to go forward with our presentations. Thank you for your patience, and we will begin shortly. I think a few members are up at our Arts, Parks, Health, and Aging Committee. That is why we're still awaiting those council members, including Mr. Labanj. I believe Ms. Han is on that committee as well. We should have them shortly. We do have today 25 items on our agenda. Those have been split into items which are noticed for public hearing and those for which public hearing has not yet been held. So for any of the items for which there is not yet public hearing, if you fill out a card in the back or in one of our remote locations, give that to the Sergeant-at-Arms or our city staff. We'll be sure to hear your comments. For items that have already had a public hearing, that requires a council member to reopen those hearings for us to be able to hear that. So we also have a section of the meeting for general public comment. You can fill out a speaker card, and you can be heard on items for which there is nothing on the agenda, but it's nevertheless under our jurisdiction. Finally, we also have our announcements at the end, and we'll be doing adjourned motions, and that will complete the meeting later on. Still awaiting our late council members. Now seventeen minutes past the hour, and council members Han, Wezar, Labanj, Reyes, and Smith are late. They will immediately make their way down to council chambers. If we don't get them shortly, we'll begin the presentations nevertheless. Thank you, as we have our VIPs begin to filter in for our presentations for your patience as well. And Ms. Han is in the house, if we can please call the roll.
Alacon Cardenas, Han, Wezar, Corretz, Krikorian, Labanj, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Parks moves, and Mr. Rosendahl seconds without objection. We'll approve those. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions.
All right, Mr. Corretz moves, and Mr. Krikorian seconds without objection. That'll be approved as well. If we can run through the agenda for any items wish to call special, first items, please.
Items one through five are items for which public hearings have been held. Committee reports have been circulated for items four and five.
Okay, if there are no specials on those items, anybody seeing none, let's take up one through five. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, that is approved. Next item?
Items six through twenty-four are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
If there's no objection to consideration, oh, if we can send one forthwith without objection, seeing none, we'll send that forthwith. Item six through twenty-four, do we have any cards on those?
No cards.
Oh, I think we do have one on, oh, that's item two. And item twenty-one, we do have one card now. We can call that special for a card from the public, and let's go ahead on the balance. And if any, no specials, items six through twenty-four, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
On the continuation agenda, item twenty-five is an item for which public hearings have been held.
Yes, Mr. Corretz?
So items seven through nineteen go forthwith?
Sure, seven through nineteen will send forthwith. And we are on item twenty-five. Does anybody wish to call twenty-five special?
Mr. Ch-
If not-
Mr. President?
Yes.
If I could also ask that we call item twenty-five special for council member Wezar.
Okay, we'll call that special for Mr. Wezar and hold that on the table. Thank you. If we can bring the rest of the meeting to order, and if I can ask Mr. Zine, is he here? Mr. Zine, could I ask you to take the chair?
All right, good morning, and this will be our first presentation. Council President Eric Garcetti with distinguished guests for our first presentation of the day. Mr. Garcetti, we're waiting other guests.
Waiting for the mayor. He's on his way over from chambers, Mr. Rosendahl, and I will escort him in, and we will begin in just a minute.
Mr. Krikorian?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. While we're waiting, I just wanted to take a moment to recognize the students of Maggie Haves Elementary School in Valley Glen who are here joining us today. If you can raise your hands and wave. We have twenty students here with their teachers, Ms. Randall and Mr. McNerland. Thank you for joining us in City Hall.
And good morning, students, welcome. Thank you, Mr. Krikorian. Mr. Rosendahl is the official usher for the City Council this morning. Mr. Rosendahl is ushering people into the chambers. Assigned seating on the right and left, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Rosendahl, you make a great usher.
I sure would, I must say. It's an exciting moment for all of us in the chambers. We're not officially starting yet, but folks, what we're doing is celebrating the first in history Gay Heritage Month. You know, everybody else has had their Heritage Month, and it's time that we come of age and we be like everybody else, we're equal, and we have-
Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Rosendahl, excuse me, if you could use the microphone, people at home can hear you also.
Well, we're gonna have music and everything else, we're just being informal, I'm just kinda warming up the moment. As soon as the mayor shows up there, they're gonna be singing us into the room here, and we're gonna have a great celebration. You can take down that, whatever that barrier is. We don't believe in barriers in the gay heritage movement. We've had enough! We're gonna give the mayor about thirty seconds more, I'm gonna go to the back of the room, and we're gonna start walking in together as a group, okay?
Ladies and gentlemen, the Honorable Mayor of the City of Los Angeles, Honorable Mayor Antonio Villarosa, joined by Council President Eric Garcetti, our City Attorney, Commissioner Tannich, Bill Rosendahl, and other distinguished guests. Take it away.
Yes, yes, yes. Come on, Charlie Beck, our chief, you're great, come on up, we want you in the room. We want you next to us. Well, good morning, everybody. This is the beginning of Gay Heritage Month in the great city of Los Angeles. It's an historic first. We have arrived in this city, and we see ourselves with basic civil and human rights as our challenge that we still have not met on a national level. But we've come a long way in this great city and in this great nation. I just wanna thank our singers for their initial getting the energy in the room going, bless you! We have our City Attorney, who'll say a few words. We have John Negle, our new assessor, who will say a few words. Give him a round of applause. All right, and first I want to introduce his honor, the mayor. I've known Antonio Villarosa for almost thirty years, and I've known him in a personal sense and in a public sense through all that period of time. He's truly a friend of the gay, lesbian, bisexual, and transgender community. And he, like everyone here in the room, have friends and family who are openly gay. He has cousins, he has relatives. Heck, the Speaker of the State Assembly, John Perez, openly gay man is his relative. So he's someone who truly believes in our civil and human rights. It's an honor to present our great mayor, Antonio Villarosa.
Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the city's first-ever lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender Heritage Month. Now, today's event carries the message loud and clear. A message that says that love doesn't discriminate. It knows no limits or boundaries, it is blind to race, religion, color, creed, or gender. It is fitting that this monumental event is taking place in Los Angeles, since our history has a long one of paving the way toward equality. From the site of the first known LGBT riot in the country, an entire decade before the Stonewall riots, to the Christopher Street West first Pride Parade in the world on Hollywood Boulevard, from my dear friend, council member Bill Rosendahl, becoming the first openly gay man elected to the Los Angeles City Council. Now, of course, that applause was for the first openly gay man. There were others, but they just weren't open.
That's right.
And you were.
They'll pick them out later on.
That's right.
Both Jackie Goldberg and Josh Fox.
That's right. Opening up the doors for many other city workers to emerge from the shadows to the historic occasion we've arrived at this month, the city's first LGBT Heritage Month. It's no coincidence that all of these groundbreaking events, and I was reading the series, and I'll share that with you on our website, the series of firsts, and it's actually a couple of pages long, when you look at the number of things that happened here, not in New York, not in San Francisco, but here in L.A. And it's happened here in L.A. because right after the federal court decision, Judge Walker's decision, I got up in West Hollywood. You didn't get that one? Mayor of L.A. and West Hollywood, but I got up at a rally in West Hollywood, I love West Hollywood, and I said something that I say wherever I go, not just at events like this. I said that in this city, people don't care who your father was. And in my case, many of you know my story, they don't care that I didn't have a father. And now with the federal Judge Walker's decision, they don't care if you have two of them. By the way, the same could be said for two mothers. I mean, the fact is that this is a city where we say, "Just do it." This is a city that acknowledges and recognizes, we come from every corner of the earth to this town. We come to remake ourselves. We come to live out our dreams, and this city will acknowledge all of the communities that live here. And that's why I couldn't be prouder to be here with all of you today. And before I hand it off to our council president, let me just say this, this council, and I'm very proud of that as well, is the most progressive council when it comes to these issues. There has never been a city council, whether it's Native American Heritage Month, or Latino Heritage Month, or African-American Heritage Month, or Asian Pacific Islander, we all revel, or whether we're salaried, narus, or the standing up against the Armenian genocide, whatever the issue is, we get up here, every one of us, and we feel it in our heart, because we recognize this is a special place that embraces all of us, and we should be proud of that. And that's why I'm proud to hand it over to a man that's always been at the forefront of these issues, our council president, Eric Garcetti.
I want to give our council president a little intro myself, folks. He's truly a leader in our great city. He's been president of our city council, we take his leadership seriously, and when it comes to the issues that matter to me and to every gay and lesbian, bisexual, and transgender person, which is equal rights and basic human and civil rights, which we still don't have, he has been a champion for us on all that, and we want to thank you, Mr. President, for your leadership on our behalf.
Thank you, thank you, Bill, and thank you to our great and progressive mayor. Bill, I know, was very restrained today, so it's tough to see him so understated, but Bill has been just an incredible champion. After Jackie Goldberg left, I was very happy to take up the mantle for a few years and to try to be the person on this council, along with Ms. Perry, who did a lot of great work, Mr. Parks, who was one of our most progressive police chiefs in dealing with LGBT community, so many others, Ms. Han, Mr. Zine, and others, to really make sure that there was a voice for the LGBT community here. But when Bill arrived, we knew that it was a proud moment, not only to come in as the first openly gay man to be elected to the city council, but as somebody who has been a leader long before he came here on so many direct issues. We just commemorated the thirtieth anniversary of the report that came out identifying HIV/AIDS, and Bill never lets us forget that that is something today that we must work towards eradicating, that it is not an issue of the past but of the present. Whether it is this council, and Bill's leadership, and others who have made sure that we look at issues of immigration, or LGBT individuals who are being killed in Africa simply by virtue of being gay or being perceived to be gay, this is a city that not only stands up for diversity here, but in the entire world. And what we celebrate here today is that this was a city that has been not just doing that recently, but for a long time. It is tremendous to have a police chief here and a former police chief, when we think about the department that thirty and forty years ago went after people simply because of their sexual orientation. Long before Stonewall, there was the Black Cat Bar here in Los Angeles. We had the first march, and it's great to see Reverend Perry here, who with Morris Kite and others stepped off the sidewalk to insults and to things being thrown at them in our lifetimes, to stand up for the basic right to walk down Hollywood Boulevard and say, "This is who I am, and I am here." We have built such a tremendous foundation here, it is breathtaking to look over the side of that cliff and to realize how far up we have climbed in such a short time. But we should not mistake the heights that we have reached for a belief that everyone is there. There is a student right now in a school today who is being teased for being perceived as being different, based on gender perception, based on sexual orientation. Right now, there are communities in which we have our work to do to make sure that folks who don't speak English, who have recently come here, who don't know that they're our friends and allies, and brothers and sisters just like them today who have the same experience, they are feeling alone and despondent, thinking about suicide, wondering what their place is in life. We celebrate this month not just to recognize those heights that we have climbed to, but to also recognize the work that must be done, and to recognize all the staff members that are here in this city, not just the elected officials, but our individual staffs, who every single day go out with that work as official representatives of this city, to say that we are the City of Angels, we will embrace you no matter who you are, and that you are welcome here in this democracy, that we, every day, enact in these chambers. So thank you to Bill, thank you to our honorees, my great friend Chad Griffin. I want to give a special shout-out, because every single person up here is full of courage, whether it was Chad saying, "Let's just take this to the courts now," whether it was the mayor and myself and Ms. Perry and others who said, "We will hold weddings right here in City Hall as long as it is legal, and we will continue pushing for it to be legal for everyone." We are a city that understands that we are full of everybody, and thank you to the LGBT community and this Heritage Month. And with that, I'll pass it back to our mayor for our credible honorees. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council President, and I have the opportunity now to acknowledge three honorees today. The Reverend Troy Perry, who's with us.
Where are you, Troy?
Chad Griffin. Why don't you come on this side? And Wanda Sykes. Each has had a major impact on the community's struggle for equality. I'd like to begin with Reverend Perry. He's the founder of the Metropolitan Community Churches. He has helped his membership grow to include two-hundred-and-fifty congregations in twenty-six countries, making it one of the largest LGBT organizations anywhere. He also performed the first public same-sex marriage ceremony in the country, filed the first lawsuit seeking legal recognition for same-gender marriages. It is my deep honor to present the Reverend Troy Perry with the Spirit of Los Angeles Award to recognize both his past success and his present leadership.
I know I'm speaking outside, but I want to thank CSW, Rodney Scott, all of the city council, the mayor of Los Angeles, one of the best in the world. I always say that everywhere I travel. This wonderful city, you don't know, I adopted this city forty-eight years ago when I moved here, and a little boy from the South, and who came to this wonderful city and started fighting for everybody's rights, but also for mine. I was the first gay person to use their real name when I came out of the closet. I didn't know you weren't supposed to, you know, that you could get into trouble, but it did it. And to see what's happened in this city, that forty-eight years later after I arrived here, I've lived to see us become the most wonderful city in the world. Now, there are blips some days, but overall, this is the most fantastic place you could live, and I've traveled all over the world. Thank you all.
As a managing partner at Griffin Shockey, Chad Griffin has dedicated his career to sh- As a managing partner at Griffin Shockey, Chad Griffin has dedicated his career to shaping the policy debate around some of our nation's most important issues, whether it's the issue of early education for children, healthcare, whether it's the championing the rights of the LGBT community. He's the mastermind, and I mean mastermind, because if you remember the debate around the federal lawsuit, there were so many people that questioned whether we should move ahead. And he was the one who said, yes, we have to do it, against Proposition 8, and he co-founded the American Foundation for Equal Rights, for his unceasing commitment to one day achieving justice and equality for all Americans. I'm pleased to present Chad Griffin with the dream of Los Angeles.
I know we're all speaking outside later, but I also want to thank the chief, the mayor, and the council president Garcetti for having us all here today and for starting what will become an annual occasion. And I'm just going to, this is the decision in Perry v. Schwarzenegger. It's been less than a year since this decision was rendered. And I want to just remind everyone of this decision, we all know that we're waiting on an appeal that is moving, not as fast as we would all like, but quickly, as it relates to lawsuits. So we're almost there, and Proposition 8 is hanging by a thread. And if I can just read one paragraph from Chief Judge Walker's opinion. Proposition 8 fails to advance any rational basis in singling out gay men and lesbians for denial of marriage license. Indeed, the evidence shows Proposition 8 does nothing more than enshrine the California Constitution, the notion that opposite-sex couples are superior to same-sex couples. Because California has no interest in discriminating against gay men and lesbians, and because Proposition 8 prevents California from fulfilling its constitutional obligation to provide marriages on an equal basis, the court concludes that Proposition 8 is unconstitutional. This is the copy for the mayor.
I love it. I love it. I love it. Yeah, it is. He was serious. I joked with him, I said, that's my copy, right? And he says, it is your copy, and I thought he was just kidding, but it is my copy. Emmy Award winner Wanda Sykes is not only one of the funniest people in America, but throughout her career as an actress, comedian, and author, she's used her distinguished voice to support the struggle for LGBT marriage equality. And following the passage of California Proposition 8 in 2008, Sykes publicly came out as a lesbian while at a same-sex marriage rally in Las Vegas, and has always been a tireless advocate for the LGBT community. To thank her for the hope she inspires through her humor and dedication, I'd like to present Wanda Sykes with the Hope of Los Angeles Award.
Make us all laugh. I love it. Go, girl. Go do your number.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor, and this amazing mayor, who's such a friend to the LGBT community and a fearless advocate for us, and we really appreciate it. I am really humbled. I can't believe, I'm getting a little emotional here, I don't know. The Hope of Los Angeles, Mayor, oof, it's a bit lofty, I think. Just say good luck or something, I don't know. It's a lot of pressure on me with the Hope of Los Angeles. But I am very, very hopeful and very optimistic, because with your guidance and the direction we're headed, and with the cases in the court, I'm very, very optimistic, very optimistic for LGBT and our future, and equality is just around the corner. So I appreciate it, and I accept this very humbly.
I'd like to thank the sponsor of today's festivities, the Toyota and Toyota Financial Services, thank them, and this celebration would not have been possible without their I'd also like to acknowledge the Nielsen Company for their contributions to today as well. Nielsen is involved in all of our Heritage Month celebrations, so we want to thank them. And I'd like to acknowledge the winner, as you know, what we try to do, this isn't just about a celebration. We try to include an education component here. And there is a winner of the LGBT Creative Writing Contest, Elliot Sitz. And what a beautiful thing. He's here with his parents, I love that, to read his poem during our program on the South Lawn. I'd also like to bring up an old friend, an old, old, old friend. We've been together, but people don't realize about the first. In the 1990s, after Sheila Kuhl and Carol Mighden came to the legislature, they started the Gay and Lesbian Caucus, there were only two of them. They asked me to join, I did. I asked my friend Kevin Murray to join as well, he did. We were the first four. We did the bill that we had been trying to pass for 20 years, a bill that said, you can't discriminate in housing and employment, as soon as I became Speaker in 1998. We did the first domestic partnership in state service that year. We did the dignity for all students, which prohibited discrimination in our schools and harassment of kids from the LGBT community. We did a number of things that they've built on since that have now gone around the country. And so Rodney was there with me all along the way. As you know, he's the fearless leader of Christopher Street West. Where are you, my buddy? And, I mean, we have, we have literally held hands in so many fights. And one of them was during the debate around the Night Initiative, you were in the room that day. They called me into the room, you know, these people were getting up and saying the ugliest things you could imagine. My son was with me, and anybody who knows Antonio, until he was 10, he used to walk around with his penguin. So we'd be with Antonio and his penguin, walking around the legislature. And when we debated that bill, I got up and I said to people at the time, something I said again and again, I said, this little guy right next to me, I don't know what's going to happen, who he's going to love when he grows up, I just don't know. All I want for this little guy is to be a good man. I want him to be an honest person. I want him to love his mom and his dad. I want him to care about the world around him. And that little speech that day, if you remember, so upset the right, that they just targeted me for a while, because they felt like I was using my son. I said, no, no, I wasn't using my son, my son was with me. And I said that day what I believe. And I think it's what many of us, all of us around this horseshoe believe. We believe that people ought to be able to love who they want, that we ought to live in a country, in a place where we don't discriminate against anyone, anyone, where we celebrate all of us, our differences and our commonalities. I'd like to present Rodney and Christopher Street West with this certificate proclaiming the first LGBT Heritage Month, which we couldn't have done without their generosity and inspiration. Some of you know, I'm going to have a little garden party, and Rodney's going to be there. Come on, Rodney, let me give you this little, little love. And with that, I'll give it back to Bill Rosenthal.
Yeah, sure, sure. Okay, Mr. President, realize that was a half an hour of the mayor's time, so we're going to continue with this program. And I just want to say a few things about some of my colleagues. Tom Labange, you know, was the first one who told me to run for this job, he says, you've got a big heart. Then he began to ask me, well, tell me about what gay people are like. So I was able to educate Tom on who we are. We're just like anybody else, okay? No, it was a good thing. Then sitting next to him is Paul.
I love Reverend Troy Perry.
All right, well, he loves everybody, and he's a good one. Paul Krikorian, you know, he just came and joined this group, I've seen his basic civil and human rights action, day in and day out, and I want to thank you too, for that, too. And next to him is Paul Caratz, who came from Little West Hollywood, he was the first great guy to join a gay organization. We appreciate what you've done for all of our people. And I want to thank Janice Hahn, who's soon going to go to Washington, as a member of the House of Representatives, for her leadership, and for her inspiration, and for her support of us. And then there was Richard Alakon, who shared with me one of his family situations historically, and admitted to me that he had a lesbian sister, and he was 100% there for her and all of that. And then I go over to Herb Wesson, Mr. Speaker, when he got elected speaker up there in Sacramento, and I did an interview, I was a TV guy at the time, and I asked him what he thought about gay rights and gay marriage, and he was the first speaker to say, I believe that gay people should have the basic civil and human rights, and their marriage should be as sacred as anybody else. Herb Wesson. Sitting next to him is Greg Smith. Now, he's considered a moderate Republican, and he kind of has to dance around on certain issues, but he's my seatmate, and he's been nothing but a friend and a complete committed guy to goodness. Thank you, Greg Smith. And my other seatmate is Ed Reyes. Ed and I talk all the time, we convince and carry on, and I know he's 100% for us, and I appreciate that as well, Ed Reyes. Some of us would say that Jan Perry is a fag-hag, but I don't want to say that. She is, what she is, is a completely committed person to our people. In fact, she takes it so seriously that I've seen her go out of her way for our people and support our people. She's fantastic. Thank you, Jan Perry. And let me tell you about Bernard Parks. We sit on the Budget Committee together, we sit on the Transportation Committee together, and I knew when he was chief of police, he had the guts and the courage to believe that we should be equally treated as a police officer. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
And Mr. Rosenthal, whose Harley Davidson did you ride on the back of at the gay parade, huh?
And as our acting president up there, this guy gets in his chaps and his leathers on the bike and everything else. So I just want to say, our city council has come a long way and has done a great thing for everybody here. I have John Nagelis here, Larry, come over here. He's our new assessor, say a few words.
Oh, my God. Thank you, everybody. Chan, I promise not to invite you anywhere anymore, because now apparently I've made you a fag-hag. And Dennis, I'm not going to dress you anymore, because they're going to know where the lipstick comes from.
Thank you, Johnny.
But nonetheless, you know, it might have been a secret, I don't know where, but I come from the City of Huntington Park as a former mayor and council member. And, and we look to other cities, you know, they said that gay people do not exist in the Latino communities, much less as elected officials. And now, not only did the City of Los Angeles carry me in this last election for county assessor, but the rest of the community of Southern California. So I thank everybody here for acknowledging what we want, basic human rights. Thank you all, we love you, thank you.
And real quickly, I want Larry Foster, who's the mayor of the City of Signal Hills, to say a greetings.
I'm so proud of all of you, thank you so much. I got elected in 1998 as the first openly gay elected in that area, along with Mike Knoll. I've been mayor now three times, and I'm living with HIV and AIDS, so there is life with it and drugs. Now we need to find a cure.
And now our great city attorney, to say a couple of words, be a fighter for our rights.
Mr. President Protam, did Councilman Rosenthal bring his A-game today to council? He is the Dirk Nowitzki of this council today. I am, I am very proud to be standing here today in support of the first in America, the very first in America, this city does it a lot, the very first in America of the Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transsexual Heritage Month. This city leads in a lot of things. This is an opportunity for us to show America how diverse we are and how civil rights have been ignored in America. I was proud to stand with this community against Proposition 8. I'm proud to stand with this community in favor of open service in our military. And I'm proud to stand with this community to build young people, because it doesn't matter if you have one mom, two moms, two dads, one dad, it doesn't matter. What matters is the fact that you should have the right to love who you want, when you want, in this country, and to build a family. And so I hope that this message goes out to everyone, that this city is not going to tolerate discrimination, that this city is not going to tolerate hate crimes against the gay community, that this city is going to stand up and recognize the civil rights of every single resident of the city. And yes, Mr. President Protam, I will be wearing my chaps with you in the parade.
And I want to note that Mr. Rosenthal, Mr. City Attorney, did ride in that parade, and he had council member Jan Perry on the back of his Harley Davidson.
Exactly right, that's right, that's right. Look, we're going to be honoring some wonderful people that need to be appreciated by all of us in many ways, in a historical sense, as well as in a courageous sense. But one last person before the honorees is our chief, Charlie Beck, who's making a huge
It's always tough, it's always tough to follow Bill, he's so quiet, but, you know, I do have a couple of things I would like to say about the police department and its relationship with the LGBT community. Last night, I attended two events. They were held simultaneously up at the Police Academy. One was my LGBT forum, which is a group from this community that directly advises me on issues that we need to address. And the other was our first-ever graduation of a community police academy dedicated exclusively to the LGBT community. That community police academy graduated 19 individuals who spent eight weeks, eight weeks of their own time, going to the police academy and learning about the Los Angeles Police Department, and becoming part of our family in order to better advise us on issues of law enforcement in the community. A really important, important piece, and the first in the city's history. I think that I do have to talk a little bit about the city's history, though. And before, my great partner and predecessor Bernard Parks was chief, there was a chief of the Los Angeles Police Department that when asked if there were gay members of the Los Angeles Police Department, he said, I know there are, because I fire one or two every year. So if you ask this chief of police, if I know whether or not there are LGBT members on the Los Angeles Police Department, my answer is this, I do, they're my brothers and sisters. And I think that we do this not only because it's the right thing to do, but is because the thing that makes us a better police department. It's the thing that makes us a police department that is responsible for everybody in this city. As the mayor says, I don't care who your father was, I don't care where you came from, I don't care what, who your partner is, I'm your police chief, this is your police department, and we will protect you, and we will protect your rights. Thank you.
Yeah, that's the chief. Wow. Now, we're going to talk about the folks that we're honoring here today. But before I do, I just want to acknowledge my chief of staff, Mike Bonin, who helped put this whole thing together, an openly gay man who's made a huge difference. Tony Aranga, my communications guy, who was also very heavily involved in making it happen, and Len Wen, where's Len Wen, who was also part of it. But by identifying three of my staffers who are openly gay, we have a lot of staffers here in the city, a lot of people that watch the backs of the elected and work throughout the bureaucracy who are openly gay and continue to provide that leadership and that energy. And I just want to thank them all. You've heard that Jackie Goldberg, Joel Wax, they were, like me, part of this transition age group. You know, many of us here who are in their 60s and 70s realize how difficult it was for us to come out. And both Jackie and Joel did come out. And before they came out, they provided the leadership that a lot of our predecessors have done, which was getting us basic rights, getting us basic support system. And then the time came for both of them to come out and share their genuineness of who they truly are. So let's give them a round of applause, who made a difference in this great city. Now, I'm going to read the script so I can stay a little bit on target here, okay? I'm pleased to present the Fifth Annual LGBT Equality Awards. When I started these awards in 2006, the city of Los Angeles has never held its own special event commemorating gay pride. I'm glad we fixed that and even happier that we've now expanded it to include the LGBT Heritage Month. Over the years, we have honored many different people: Sheila Kiel, Dan Choi, Michael Weinstein, Wilson Cruz, and many others. This year, I want to honor trailblazers, people who took a bold first step and paved the way for others. In this position, I have trailblazers Jackie Goldberg and Joel Wax, who came before me. Their example was strong and empowering. It is important to celebrate not just only the well-known, but also the heroes and heroines who walk among us. They are leaders and trailblazers in our neighborhoods, our workplace, and our families. People of courage, skill, dignity, and power. Today, I'm glad to recognize and honor them. The trailblazers on civil rights: Chris Perry and Sandy Steer, Paul Katemani and Jeff Zerillo. Let me just say, I wear this tie. This is a tie I got at a wedding I performed. I performed, I had the privilege of five gay marriages and three straight marriages, so I've done eight of them. But I wear this every time. Every time I'm thinking of the part of me that, that is openly gay and that we should honor ourselves and honor our trailblazers, people who've made a huge difference. When Prop 8 amended the California Constitution, stripped us of our civil rights to marry, many people considered returning to the ballot to overturn this measure. Other people thought we should not have to beg voters for our rights. They said we should march into the court and demand them. With the assistance of creative minds like Chad Griffin and the legal dream team of Ted Olson and David Boies, the American Foundation for Equal Rights found two couples willing to sue the state and demand that their loving unions be recognized. Those couples are standing here right now: Chris Perry, Sandy Steer, Paul Katemani, and Jeff Zerillo. You know, talk is cheap. It's that kind of action that shows real leadership. Chris and Sandy have been together for 10 years and are the parents of four boys. Chris is Executive Director of the First Five California, a state agency that promotes education and health for children under fire. She holds a BA from University of California, Santa Cruz, and an MSW, Social Worker, all right, from San Francisco State University. Sandy is the Information Technology Director for the Alameda County Behavioral Healthcare Services Agency, and she's originally from Iowa and is a graduate of the University of Iowa. Chris and Sandy first tried to marry in 2004 after the city of San Francisco began issuing licenses. And I just want to let the two of them come up, say a few words first, and then I'll introduce the two guys. Ladies first.
Thank you so much, Mayor, Councilmen, Councilmembers. We bear greetings from the People's Republic of Berkeley, another great city in this great state, and wanted to say that we couldn't be more honored or thrilled or flattered by your recognition of the effort that went into repealing Proposition 8. And indeed, not very long ago, in 2004, another great city, another great mayor opened their doors in City Hall and allowed couples to come get married, which we did. But unfortunately, a few short weeks later, they revoked that marriage. They sent us back our marriage license fees. And it was from that day forward that we knew that there was something terribly wrong with a state and a city setup that really put people's constitutional rights up to votes from city councils and legislatures. And when Chad Griffin and the American Foundation for Equal Rights decided that a challenge to Proposition 8 that was constitutionally based was something that they wanted to try, we couldn't have been happier. We couldn't be happier with the results, and we're so pleased that you invited us here today, and you're, you're also happy with the results. Thank you very much.
Oh, I would just like to say, we are privileged and honored to receive this award. It's a wonderful day. It's a wonderful experience. But for us, the reward, the award, goes to all the people who have supported the effort for Proposition 8 to overturn it and, and to provide the support for our community at large. We're in this battle for everybody. We're in this battle for the kids out there. You know, we're moms, and we're just really hopeful for the future of our kids and feel like we're in a great place today, knowing that we have a victory under our belt and hoping that it really takes hold in a few months or maybe a couple of years, and we really get to see the benefit of it and have what, for us, I guess will be our third wedding, which is starting to sound kind of crazy, but, you know, nothing but fun in the future, hopefully. So, thank you.
Bless you, bless you, bless you. And here you go. Now, let's talk about Paul and Jeff. Have been together for nine years. Paul is a fitness expert and a small business owner who graduated from Santa Clara University before receiving his graduate degree from the University of California, Los Angeles. Jeff is the general manager of a theater exhibition company, a native of New Jersey, Jersey boy. Jeff graduated from Montclair State University, having wanted to marry each other for more than two years. They considered options, including traveling to other states for civil unions, but felt any alternative felt short of marriage. On behalf of the LGBT community, on behalf of the people who believe in justice and equal rights, I want to thank and honor these beautiful couples for having the courage to stand up, sacrifice their privacy, put it all on the line to insist on our basic human dignity. Paul and Jeff.
Certainly sounds like a lot of fun happens here. I think I might have to run for office. I want to thank the council, the entire L.A. City Council, and Mr. Mayor being here. We certainly appreciate being, being honored today. We could never have imagined we would have been part of this lawsuit. Special thanks go out to the American Foundation for Equal Rights and Chad Griffin, and also our amazing legal team led by Ted Olson and David Boies. You know, when you, when you grow up gay, I think you just expect that you're not going to be treated equal. And then when you finally find someone that you want to spend the rest of your life with, you don't accept it, you don't expect that you'll be accepted into the social norms of marriage. And when you live in a state, and ultimately a country, that allows discrimination into their constitution and allows people's fundamental civil rights to be put up to a vote and ultimately to be decided not by the truth, but by campaign tactics and distortions. That's why we became involved in this lawsuit, and that's why we're really hopeful with the progress we've made so far, that we will soon be able to get married and not be looked at as second-class citizens, but as equals. Now, we're just a couple... I'll wrap, I'll wrap it up by just saying this: We're just a couple of weeks removed from Harvey Milk Day. And Harvey said, "You gotta give 'em hope." That you have to come out. People need to know that they live with, that they work with, and that they go to school with gay people. Because when we tell our stories, we change hearts and minds. Thank you. Again, special thanks for this acknowledgement. We never expect to be acknowledged for the work. We're just doing what we feel is right, and we are always honored and humble about all of this, in this entire process. I can't say it better than Jeff said it. What I can say is that we're proud to be American, we're proud to be gay, and we will be proud to be married in our state very soon.
All right. God bless you, guys. See how much fun you can have when you really feel things are moving in the right direction, right, Jan? I mean, come on, this is fabulous, you know? Marcia DeVallos, Trailblazer for Justice. Come on up. Bless you, bless you, bless you. Marcia deserves, serves as the Executive Vice President of HonorPAC, which is an advocate for health care for the state Latino population. HonorPAC, founded in 2005, advocates for the political empowerment of the Latino LGBT community by endorsing and financially supporting candidates who are committed to advancing Latino and LGBT rights in California. Since its founding, HonorPAC has raised over $100,000 and has endorsed dozens of candidates for local and statewide positions, establishing itself as one of the most active Latino-LGBT political action committees in California and in the nation. Marcia serves as Executive Director of the Regional Network for the Latino Coalition for a Healthy California, a statewide policy group that fights to improve the conditions, services, and health of Latinos across the state of California. She also works as a community organizer for various campaigns, including statewide ballot initiatives, and as Deputy Campaign Manager for a state democratic primary. She's trained under the leadership of the Dolores Huerta Foundation, Emily's List, Courage Campaign, and the Victory Fund Leadership Institute. She received a BA in Business Administration and Management Information Systems from the California State University, Northridge. She currently lives in Sherman Oaks with her partner, Lorette Healy. Is Lorette in the room?
No, she's not. She's in New York.
We all know Lorette. She's out there. Okay? And they, they live together, and they also have a couple of dogs and a couple of cats. Come on up.
Hello and thank you. I'm, I'm both, first and foremost, I just want to say thank you very much to Councilmember Rosenthal, to the mayor, to all the council, friends, family, colegas, my mom, right over there, and...
Stand up, your mom.
My mom's right over there, holding my niece. And I just wanted to say that I'm both humbled and honored to be receiving this award. I'm humbled because there's so many other trailblazers and pioneers here in the room that, you know, I just hope that this is, this is just going to be the beginning of our work. This is going to be the beginning of, of an amazing experience, you know, headed towards equality. So I just wanted to say thank you very much.
Yeah, Judy Chu presented certificates, too. A whole bunch of different people did to honor everybody. Where's Carolyn Weiss? Come on up. This is a trailblazer for courage and self-acceptance. This is a big deal. Carolyn Weiss, colleagues, most of you know her historically, but you knew her as Cliff Weiss, a prominent official and Community Development Department. Carolyn began her city career in December of 1980 as a junior administrative assistant at the LAPD's Rampart Police Station. She moved through the ranks and became fascinated by law enforcement and became a reserve police officer in 1982. As a reserve officer, she received numerous commendations and was three times awarded the Division Reserve Officer of the Year honors, and once the South Bureau Reserve Officer of the Year. In 1992, she took a position at the Police Commission, eventually serving as the Deputy Executive Director. Carolyn became the Commission's expert on anti-terrorist division policies, as well as head of the Commission's Use of Force Review section. In 2000, Carolyn moved to the Community Development Department, ultimately becoming the Deputy Director for Economic Development Division. She oversaw creation of the Federal Renewal Community Economic Development Zone, as well as the expansion of the city's State Enterprise Zone program. Last year, she was appointed Director of the CDD's Central West Regional Area, overseeing work source and the family source contractors from downtown to Hollywood and west to Venice. She continues to manage the citywide business incentive program. In April, Carolyn notified her colleagues that after much soul-searching, she realized she is a transgendered woman and was going to begin her process of becoming female. Carolyn was born in Brooklyn, grew up in the San Fernando Valley, graduated from J.H. Francis Polytech High School, and later California State University, Northridge. She's married and has an 18-year-old son. It's a pleasure to welcome Carolyn today.
Mr. Mayor, President Garcetti, Councilmember Rosenthal, and members of the council, it is a great honor to be recognized today on L.A. Pride Day as both a city employee and a representative of the transgender community. I have known some of you, Councilmembers Labange, Zine, and Parks in particular, for a very long time, and my friend Charlie Beck. I am as surprised to be standing here as you are probably surprised to see me. Councilmembers, there are places in the world where I would not be welcome, even in America. Much less honored, as you have done today. Prejudice, fear, and ignorance about who transgendered people are is still widespread, I'm very sorry to say. The journey that transgendered people take to be true to ourselves is a very lonely one, often filled with fear, shame, guilt, regret, and loss. Many of my friends have lost spouses, family, jobs, and homes. Too many transgender teens have been kicked out of their homes and sometimes even assaulted by their own parents. Violence too often stalks us, and suicide far too often takes our lives. I am here today to say that it doesn't have to be that way. The world is changing, and we are being accepted by society as deserving of dignity and respect like anyone else. I am so blessed to have the love and support of my wonderful wife, Ruby, my son, and my family who are over here.
Come on up.
I have dear friends who have stood by me, and I have had the great good fortune of working at the Community Development Department, whose management has given me unwavering support, and where my colleagues have accepted me with open minds, open hearts, and incredible friendship and love. Thank you. There are times when politicians do indeed do things that are bold, courageous, and forward-looking. You should be very proud that this city council, and Mayor Villarreal, and Mayor Hahn before him, have put into place workplace protections for transgendered city employees that are among the strongest in the nation and probably the world. You have shown foresight, wisdom, and generosity of spirit, and I thank you so much, and I hope your actions are emulated everywhere. I want other transgendered city employees, and I know there are others, to know that they can also transition at work without fear, and that the city cares about our welfare and our rights as human beings. Thank you for making Los Angeles such a welcoming place for members of the transgender community. As Lady Gaga so wonderfully says in her song, "I'm beautiful in my way, 'cause God makes no mistakes." I'm on the right... I'm on the right track, baby.
And God does not make any mistakes, folks. Just remember that. Our nature comes from God, and God makes no mistakes. So I say that to the religious crowd outside of the room here, to understand that, that we're all God's children and made in God's image and likeness. And some people say, "Well, marriage, you know, it should be for this and for that." Look, the word "marriage" right now is codified, and a thousand laws in the federal government were denied. We want the basic civil and human rights as everybody else, so we're going to continue to fight, and we want our transgender folks to have the same respect. Look at Richard Alarcon, he's right there, supporting somebody that he truly believes in as well. It's a thrill. Now we have Stephen Simon. All of us know Stephen Simon. Come on, Stephen, where are you? Come on up. He's always organizing something, always doing something, always running around the room. He's the AIDS Coordinator for the City of Los Angeles. He's responsible for the development, implementation, and oversight of the city's HIV/AIDS policies and programs, advising the mayor and us on the council on HIV/AIDS issues, and development of the city initiatives to fund prevention activities and support services for people living with HIV. And as you know, unfortunately, we have a celebration this Sunday, 30th anniversary of detecting AIDS that has done such a devastating impact on our community. And Stephen has been a founding attorney on an HIV/AIDS Legal Defense Alliance, Los Angeles sole law firm dedicated to the needs of people infected and affected with AIDS, and serves as the Associate Director for Government Affairs for AIDS Project Los Angeles. A vocal advocate for bi-visible, Stephen has been active in the LGBT community since being elected and first-out African-American student body president at UCLA School of Law. Thanks for doing that, Ben. Stephen is the Political Vice President of the Stonewall Democratic Club, and serves as an Advisory Board Member of Sheriff Lee Baca and the Public Advocacy Chair of the Los Angeles County HIV Commission. He's a Board Chair Emeritus of the California African-American AIDS/HIV Advisory Board, Steering Committee Member of the California Hepatitis Alliance, and a member of the Community Advisory Board for the UCLA Center for HIV Identification, Prevention, and Treatment. He formally served on the boards of the National AIDS Housing Coalition and the Latino Coalition Against AIDS. Stephen receives his Juris Doctorate and Bachelor's Degree from the University of California, Los Angeles, and is a member of the California Bar Association. God bless you. Come on up.
Mr. Rosenthal, Mr. Reyes for a moment. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Council Rosenthal, for this opportunity. Well, thanks, Stephen Simon. There's a great monument, and it's a tribute to folks who have passed away due to AIDS and illnesses, and Richard Zaldivar was here from Las Memorias, has working with the city. So I'm going to take this opportunity to recognize both of you for outstanding work you've done in creating awareness, especially in the east side of the city, where you have the Spanish-speaking community still trying to understand the trauma this creates to many of the families who are in denial, who don't want to accept it. The machismo in our culture is very punitive, and it makes many suffer. So I thank you for that, and I thank you for all your support.
Thank you. Thank you very much, council members. You know, I think, as Bill referenced, you know, there was a fancy reception out here, a fancy one in the mayor's office, and a real quiet, not very fancy one that I was hosting behind council chambers, because we were commemorating that 30-year anniversary of the HIV and AIDS epidemic that was discovered and recognized here in Los Angeles by Dr. Michael Gottlieb, who joined us, and a lot of AIDS leaders like Richard Zaldivar you mentioned. We sat down to break bread and discussed what can we do 30 years in to make a difference. Now, I start with that because it's my lead-in to saying to you, thank you so much that for half of my 15 years fighting the HIV epidemic, I've worked for you. I've worked with you, plus to make sure that L.A. stays on the forefront of the fight against HIV and AIDS. We've worked together, we had the first, the world's first AIDS antidiscrimination law enacted by the City Council of Los Angeles. We had then-city Attorney James Han, who appointed the nation's first full-time city attorney working on HIV issues, the first full-time HIV civil, I'm sorry, discrimination attorney. This was really groundbreaking. We supported together the work of Assemblymember Carras and Assemblymember Kikarian, when they were up in Sacramento, to do really groundbreaking legislation to support people living with HIV. I want to say, what's more important than that perhaps is, you have all been incredibly supportive of the HIV and AIDS organizations in your districts. It's made my job a lot easier, and it's made Los Angeles a much healthier city. So thank you on behalf of people living with HIV and AIDS. Let me, let me, one more note. I know we're running late. I need to add one more piece. I really appreciate being recognized here at home, if you will, not only for my work for the city doing HIV and AIDS work, but for my political work in the LGBT community. I'm very, very proud to be a board member of the Jordan Ruston Coalition, an African-American LGBT organization, and particularly, deep to my heart, is my work with the Stonewall Democratic Club, which I hope in two months to be elected to as President of, to lead them into the next several years. And you, most of you have been through our grueling, grueling endorsement process, and you know how hard we put you through that work. Why? Because you do need to work to prove how absolutely committed you are to our community. And I will tell you, you have shown us time and time again you believe in our true family values: equality for everyone in Los Angeles, regardless of race, regardless of gender identity, regardless of immigration status, and regardless of sexual orientation. So thank you again.
God bless you.
Mr. Rosenthal, if we could, if we could, the mayor and the chief, I know they have pressing schedules, and we could just acknowledge their presence. I know they have other activities to attend to.
We're to our last, and certainly not the least.
Okay, well, Mr. Rosenthal, but in respect to the mayor and the chief police, it is 11:30. They've been here. If they wish to leave, I want to acknowledge their presence.
No, they're going to wait.
They're going to wait?
Okay, of course.
Your staff contacted me and said, "You have other events," so I'm doing my job.
It's okay.
All right.
Get back on your bicycle or...
No, it's a motorcycle. It's a Harley-Davidson, and you're on the back of it, waving your hands.
Trailblazer.
Back to Mr. Rosenthal for the next session.
Samuel Chu, come on up, Samuel. Colleagues, I often say, and you've heard me say it since I've been on this city council, that we're all created in God's image, and God makes no mistake. And I've said that for many, many years. Our next award goes to someone who ran an organization that understands that and teaches that to the people of faith, because it's the people of faith who have to see it as part of God's mission, as Troy Perry obviously does, as why we need to do this. He's the first Executive Director of California Faith for Equality from 2009 to March 2011, and was one of the first straight alliances to lead a statewide LGBT organization. During his time as Executive Director, he grew to be the largest statewide interfaith network of over 6,000 LGBT supportive clergy and congregations. And the organization's became a national leader in putting faith at the center for the equality movement. During that time, CFE filed four major interfaith briefs in state and federal courts, totaling over 3,000 signers representing traditions, denominations, movements, congregations, and the clergy of all kind. By working in churches and by reaching out people of faith, Samuel and the CFE demonstrates that God is not about bigotry and intolerance. God embraces us all, and people of faith should and can be in the forefront of all battles for equality. A first-generation immigrant, Samuel was born and raised in Hong Kong to a Southern Baptist household. He's currently a Fellow of the Center for Religion and Civic Culture at the University of Southern California, and the president of One LAIAF, Industrial Areas Foundation, and Ten Ten Development Corporation. Great honor to have Samuel chip.
Thank you, Bill, and thank you, the mayor and chief and the full council for having this moment. And I want to yield really the first part of my thoughts and remarks to the Reverend Troy Perry. I want to acknowledge once again that we stand, and I stand, in the shadow of Reverend Troy, who was the first and one of the first, and continue to be at the forefront of this work, of declaring to each and every person that religion should never, ever be used to harm and to strip away a person's humanity. And since it's the first LGBT heritage, I think it's fitting for me to share with you that I grew up in a British colony in Hong Kong to a son of a Southern Baptist pastor in a fishing village in the eastern part of Hong Kong Island. And I pastored here in Los Angeles at Emmanuel Presbyterian Church. Were 75 of our members are first-generation immigrants from Latin America. And if my parents were here reading and thinking and listening to what Bill just said, they would have a heart attack. But that's the beauty of this celebration and this city that we're in, is that we're more than just a single identity, or a single story, or one single right or wrong that were done to us. We're not defined by those singularities, but we're defined by the diversity of our own stories and our experience, and the diversity that mixed up with the city. And so I receive this honor on behalf of all the faith communities and everyone who believes that we're not defined by a single right or a single wrong. And that, in this celebration, we're lifting up the fact that when we fight for the rights of our people, and we fight to right the wrong against anyone, that's when we're fully human, and that's when we're fully who God created us to be. So thank you so much.
With that, colleagues, I turn the council back...
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. We have colleagues Carras, Perry, Han, Alarcon, and Labonge. So let's start with Mr. Carras. Mr. Carras.
My colleagues want to speak, so let's all hold up and hear them speak.
Now, ladies and gentlemen, we're still in session. The council members who wish to address...
Please.
Those of you who need to leave, please do it quietly, and we will continue with our colleagues, starting with Mr. Carras.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an amazing day for me to see, and I know it's, it's hard for anyone to pay attention because they think it's over, but, but I'm trying to speak to all the people that are here. I've been involved in LGBT issues for 40 years. I started in high school when I had friends that were mistreated, and I knew I didn't like it, and I knew I would do whatever I could for the rest of my life to change that. I started working for candidates who were gay, like Joel Wax, who wasn't open, but it was the worst-kept secret of the city of Los Angeles, back in the early 70s. I joined the Stonewall Democratic Club. I was the first straight man to join in 1975, and I can tell you it was not the most popular thing to do back then. And we've, we've made so much progress over 40 years, and it's been a great honor for me to be part of it. But a couple of things have made me really think that we're ready to achieve equality. And I have to say, back when I first got started, I didn't think it was possible. I thought the hope was that we would someday not treat gays and lesbians with ridicule and instead would treat them with dignity. But now I think we are close to equality. You've seen a lot of things, but the two things that stood out the most to me, one were what we just heard today from our police chief. Who would ever believe that we would hear a comment like that from the chief of the LAPD? Just incredible, and we've come a long way. The other one actually was something my daughter said to me a few years ago, when the gay marriage issue started to be discussed. And I thought she would say, you know, "Why do gay people want to be married?" What she said was, "You have to be kidding me. Gay people can't marry?" And when she said that, I knew that ultimately we're going to win this issue, because younger people don't even understand why it's an issue. They, they have gay friends, they know many gay people, they look up to gay politicians, they know gay people in entertainment and every other field, and they don't see the problem. And that's because there is no problem. And so whether it happens this year, or next year, or a couple of years from now, as every step we take forward, from having gay marriage pass the state legislature, to having Gavin Newsom presiding over marriages in San Francisco, unbelievable things that I never thought would happen, and having an event like this, it's just so exciting to me that I know I will see in my lifetime absolute full equality for LGBT folks. Thank you all for being here, and this is, this is a great celebration. Bill, thank you for putting this forward. It's been an honor for me, and it's been an honor for me to work on the campaigns of many gay and lesbian candidates, and the one I'm the most pleased with is Bill Rosenthal, who I'm delighted to get, to now get to serve with here on the city council. Thank you all.
Ms. Jan Perry.
Thank you very much, my big woolly bear in chaps. I appreciate it. I look forward to the parade.
Oh, that's me.
That's right. That's Dennis.
Thank you very much.
I look forward each year to the parade to see if Dennis can still fit into his chaps. So, Bill, thank you very much for that introduction. I appreciate it. But on a serious note, I did do, perform a number of ceremonies in the council chamber, and I've done 10 weddings in the course of my tenure as a councilperson. I can tell you, they all are the same. People bring their parents, people bring their children, everybody cries, there's flowers, and people make commitments for life, and that's what marriage is all about. Marriage should be open to everybody. It's even more poignant for me as a godmother of a young man who has two dads, is I want him to have the same options that I had when he grows up, and I want his fathers to have that too. And I know that our society is headed in a right direction, or at least our state, and I look forward to that day. Thank you. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Ms. Han, Congresswoman Han.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Phil Rosenthal. Let's just say, it's such a joy and a pleasure every single day to serve with you. You are so passionate about so many issues, but clearly about the LGBT community, and you remind us on a daily basis of where there still is more work to be done. And today, the program today was absolutely exhilarating, and your energy certainly is contagious. And we are really a part of a very special movement. I mean, the fact that, first of all, this is the first time we've ever celebrated the LGBT Heritage Month is so significant, and it's like any other civil rights movement that this country has been a part of. We are a part in Los Angeles of taking a very important stance and a very important position on our support of these issues. You know, but it always reminds me, we still have so much farther to go, whether it was a few years ago in West Hollywood when we marched together to stand in support of Trevor, who was brutally beaten on the sidewalk for being openly gay, or when we went to West Hollywood a few years ago and rallied on the anniversary of the death of Matthew Shepard, or when I attended a local university here last year with the students who were in support of one of their fellow students who unfortunately had the word "it" carved into his chest. I realize that there's still so much more we need to do, so much more that we need to educate, so that equality really will be celebrated and honored by everyone. But certainly gays, lesbians, bisexuals, transgenders, they're certainly a part, you are a part of our community. Your value, your contributions are limitless, and your contributions to who we are as a city, who we are as a people, really makes us all so much more human and so much valuable in our own lives. And today, on the city council, I'm so pleased, and I've signed on, as many of you have, to some significant resolutions. We're going to go on record today in Los Angeles. We're going to go on record today, and I'm not going to read them all, but one of them is Senate Joint Resolution 2, which urges the President, Congress, and Secretary of Defense... Defense to requiring service members discharged under "Don't Ask, Don't Tell" to repay the cost of their military education and training. We're asking, we're supporting federal legislative legislation to grant Joseph Obukumbi, a gay man from Uganda, a visa extension and possible permanent residency so that he not be sent back to Uganda where he faces the threat of violence because of his sexual orientation. We're supporting SB 117, which prohibits state agencies from entering into a contract of $100,000 or more with businesses that discriminate based on sexual orientation or providing employee benefits. We're supporting SB 747, which requires state regulatory boards that license or certify healthcare personnel to mandate a continuing education course in LGBT cultural competency in healthcare. This is one, based on the story I just told, AB 620 requires California Community Colleges, California State University, and the University of California to train faculty and staff on LGBT issues and provide services to address LGBT student needs and add sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression to campus anti-discrimination policies. There are others that we are supporting today, and many of you know that I am running for Congress. I hope to be there in about 40 days, the election is.
We need you there.
My very first endorsement was from the LGBT Democratic Club Lambda in Long Beach, and I will tell you, one of the things I most want to work on when I go to Congress is with our own state senator, Dianne Feinstein, in finally repealing the Defense of Marriage Act. It's time, it's time that we do that. So, thank you, Bill, for allowing us to do this, and thank you for your love for all of us and the way you always help us to become better human beings.
Bless you. Thank you.
Mr. Alarcon, followed by Mr. Labonge.
Bill, thanks for putting this together. Not only was it necessary and certainly appropriate, it was fun. We don't have that much fun around here, so we really appreciate that. I do have to say something to correct the record. It wasn't my sister. I have four sisters, and they're all probably calling to figure out why I was the first to know about the other sister, and the truth is, it's none of them. And not that they would care, because they wouldn't, but the fact is that it was my former stepdaughter who I raised that is lesbian. I also want to applaud my fellow parrot from Poly High School. It's the Poly Parrots. And Carol was telling me that he graduated in 1972, I graduated in 1971. And, you know, to consider what kind of consternation and what kind of difficulty it must have, you know, we've heard of people changing their parties, changing a lot of things, but when you think of changing your gender, I mean, that is something that must be incredibly difficult, and it takes a lot of courage. And so I want to say that I'm a proud parrot for you standing before this council and announcing to the world your transition. Congratulations, and most importantly, congratulations to a family that really, that support, I know, must have meant a tremendous amount. Congratulations to all of you. You know, they can shut down a lot of things in terms of political perspective, but there's one thing they can't stop, and that's love. And love will prevail, and that's why I know that someday we will have equality on this issue. Finally, let me just say that, you know, this event is important for a lot of reasons, but I think of all those people who still have to hide their own identity and mask who they are. Yeah, some of us say cavalierly, oh, you should just come out and make it a lot easier on everybody. The fact of the matter is, there's still a lot of repression in this world, and we are one of the most diverse cities in the world, meaning that we have a lot of people who come from a lot of different countries here. And for those especially who, because of the repression where their families may be in other parts of this world, and therefore they hide their LGBT nature, you know, I say that this event will contribute to opening that door for them on a worldwide basis to have the opportunity to come out and be who they really are. And I think in doing so, it will make a better world. So congratulations for all those reasons. God bless you and continued success to the LGBT community.
Mr. Labonge.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to give a shout out to the late, great mayor, Tom Bradley, who did many, many things, but a special shout out to Peggy Stevenson as councilwoman. When she was here, she hired the first openly gay deputy, Larry Ray, R-E-A-H, was, I believe, his name, and also Newt Dieter was the first gay chief of staff, Peggy Stevenson. Let's give a hand for those who went before us. Nice shout out for James Hahn, too, as many did for his work as city attorney. God bless everybody. Have a great day.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Kocorian, followed by Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know I'm the new guy here, but I can't believe that this is the first time in this city's history that we've recognized LGBT heritage here in the council. And Bill Rosendahl, I just can't thank you enough for making this happen because, especially in this city with such a proud heritage, with such a proud LGBT heritage, a city that's played such a fundamental role in changing the way this country thinks about the LGBT community and itself. It's remarkable that this is the first time that we've done this, and I want to thank you very much, Bill, and all of the leaders here that we recognized as trailblazers in this area. And it's especially poignant to me because, you know, in my own little way, in my own community, I'm a trailblazer myself, as the first Armenian-American ever to be elected to this council, and Mr. Alarcon's comments towards the close of his comments struck home with me because there are many communities in this city that think in a different way and that have a different perspective on LGBT equality than all of us in the room do. And I'm sorry to say that in my own Armenian community, there's a great deal of that. There's a great deal of that kind of prejudice. And when I ran for the State Assembly in 2000, I was pilloried. I was ripped apart on Armenian television every single night because I merely stood up in support of domestic partnership in 2000. So in the span of less than a decade, in 2008, when I was a, I lost that election, I won the next time around, and in 2008, as a member of the State Assembly, I was able to proudly stand up and sign my name as a member of, as one of those legislators who filed the Amicus brief in opposition to Proposition 8 in support of full marriage equality in the span of less than a decade. And it's remarkable when we think about how far we've come, how far we've come as a city, as a country. And it's certainly been because of courageous leadership by people like yourself, Bill, and so many of the others in this room. But I think it's also important to note, since we're talking about heritage, that it's also because of the courage of ordinary Americans, ordinary Angelenos who, in their everyday life, did nothing, they weren't pursuing the gay agenda, they were pursuing the American agenda in their place of work, in their schools, in their ordinary life. These were people who stood, in 1967, in the Black Cat Tavern at Sunset Junction in Silverlake, you know, when those ordinary Americans stood up and said, no, you're not going to beat me anymore, you're not going to arrest me anymore under false pretenses, I have rights as an American, not a gay American, an American. And it was those ordinary people who stood up and really demanded nothing more than that we live up to our true defining value as a country, that all people are created equal. And, you know, I think in that respect, all Americans, every American owes a debt of gratitude to those in the LGBT community who have said, let's make that real. And I think in doing that, you really have changed the way America sees itself.
Mr. Kocorian.
And I think we now are at a point where we certainly have a long way to go. There's certainly a lot of abuse, there's certainly a lot of prejudice still, but I think we're at a point now where we can start to see that ordinary Americans throughout this country see that an injustice to anyone is a threat to justice to everyone. And so we all stand with you, and thank you very much for this day, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Kocorian. Mr. Parks, followed by Mr. Weezer, and then our final speaker, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill, let me commend you for this day. It was outstanding, and I wish Chief Beck was here because I really would like to commend him for continuing the form because that was something that didn't come easy in the sense of within LAPD to bring the first forum to talk about gay/lesbian issues and to continue moving that forward, to talk about enforcement and a variety of things. And then to think just a short time ago, probably in the early 1997, 98, to realize that LAPD had never participated in the Pride Parade, and to allow the first uniform officers to actually march in the Pride Parade was something that was a major undertaking. Also, I don't think we can forget about David Kalisch, first openly gay deputy chief on Los Angeles Police Department, opened up many doors, made one mistake, decided he wanted to be chief of police and became basically assassinated on his career because he became the first openly gay person that wanted to be the chief of police of Los Angeles. And so I think we have to thank some of those people that broke those doors down. I was just telling Ed Reyes, and I forget what committee we were on, was probably since I've been on council, the most hatred I've seen in people's responses when he was dealing with the issue of the wall, with Richard coming forth for Lincoln Park, and to see people that came in in large numbers and just person after person spewing hatred was mind-boggling. You thought they had been shipped in from some other place, but we found out they were actually city residents that had that kind of hatred. And so to see Richard move forward on that wall, I think is important. I just want to remind Bill Rosendahl about a conversation he and I had, and I still use this as an example of one of the more humorous things that Bill has said. When I was appointed chief of police, Bill called me on the phone, and I was riding down the San Diego freeway, and Bill says, I wanted to talk to you and congratulate you for becoming the chief of police. I said, thank you. He says, but I don't know how to tell you this, I wanted to relate to you a story that I've gotten a lot of calls about. And I said, well, just tell me what's on your mind. And he says, you know, the rumor is that you're gay and chief, and he says, and Mayor Reardon's gay, and you're dating, that's why you're the chief of police. So I didn't say anything, I just, I just said, okay, I'm gonna let this ride for a while. And so Bill then says, and I don't think anything wrong with it because I'm openly gay, and I said, you are? And so that was how we found out, that I found out that Bill Rosendahl was gay. So it was one of those things, it was one of those funny conversations. I called my wife right after that and asked her to sit down. She was in the bank, and I said, I just want you to know that I'm gay. And so, but we've had a lot of fun about that story because Bill was verifying some rumors that came out about the appointment. And so it was just funny that that was the first time, having been on his show dozens of times, it never crossed my mind that Bill was gay or we ever discussed that. But I want to thank Bill for bringing this forward and also for educating the council about so many of these issues as relates to marriage and human rights. I think you're the first person I've heard use the word "human rights" as it related to gay rights issues. And so you brought it to the real fundamental issue that you should not deny anyone of their human rights. And so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Weezer, and our fellow speaker, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And, Bill, congratulations. Incredible today, beautiful, and like Ms. Han said, you are passionate about a lot of issues and certainly bringing into these council chambers issues of gays, lesbians, and bisexuals is on top of that list in terms of always educating this council about the issues out there. But I just want to say I love you, congratulations, and having presided over three same-sex marriages, let me tell you, they're no different than any other marriage, there's love in the room, there's love in the air, and that's a common bond. God bless you. Congratulations, Bill, and to everyone today.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Reyes.
Just before Mr. Reyes speaks, just as a point of privilege, people have noticed two people standing next to me, Robyn Tyler and Diane Olson, were the two that started this whole thing. We honored them in years past. You might have remember, I was holding the hoopla at their very first marriage, and with their energy, June 16th is Marriage Equality Day in our great city, and it was their great leadership for all of us that were the true trailblazers for all of us. I just want to acknowledge them. Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President, Mr. Rosendahl. You know, when Councilmember Parks was asking about that question, I was thinking, you know, they weren't shipped in from another place, they're folks who actually live in our districts, folks who, I really feel in their hearts, their sense of religion is so intense that it's hard for them to see beyond the written word and to not value human life is startling. And to see how much pain and suffering there is, and I speak of the women who become contaminated by different diseases because their husbands are out floundering, doing things they shouldn't be, and they hide behind the machismo and religion to deny the pain that their partners are going through. And I need to say this in public because I see how much Richard Zollivar, a former chief of staff of Art Snyder, was able to look at resources, bring together a public place, and celebrate the life that many choose to deny or hide because of that shame that's based on religious points of view that, to me, is very, very painful. So I thank you for that, and I appreciate all your hard work, and congratulations.
Mr. Rosendahl, that completes our presentation today. Thank you.
Appreciate the time, and I appreciate all your comments.
All right. Thank you very much, colleagues. Next presentation, Mr. Tom Labonge. Tom Labonge.
Members, very quickly here, we want to welcome some people from far, far away, but they came to see how government works, and they certainly, and also equality and people, which is so important. Please welcome Zula Dammian, head of the Mongolian delegation from Mongolia here in Los Angeles. Zula.
Hello, everybody. Thank you very much for having us here, and we have special delegates from the city of Ulaanbaatar supporting Mongolian Cultural Day on June 4th, which is tomorrow at the City Hall South Lawn. So please invite delegates from the city of Ulaanbaatar.
And what we want to do is encourage everyone, if they're downtown in Los Angeles, if they're walking on their bike, running, or take red line, green line, go line, any line, to the center city, to the south steps of City Hall for a great festival. And right here is a young man from Mongolia. Mongolia, Dennis, where's Mongolia? You know, you're a traffic cop.
Mongolian is west of here.
Wait, 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 wait. This is a leader of the delegation.
West of the ocean.
We're so proud to have them here to learn about that, to celebrate. Many Mongolians live in Los Angeles. Could you say a brief words?
Honorable President and honorable council members, first of all, I would like to express my gratitude for providing us this opportunity to be here. Also, I would like to convey our greetings on behalf of the mayor of Ulaanbaatar City and the chairman of City Council of Ulaanbaatar City, and as well as I would like to extend my thanks, great thanksness to all the council members on behalf of the Mongolian community in Los Angeles and on behalf of the Mongolian people.
So please give a warm City Council welcome to our delegation from Mongolia in the press room. I'm going to give them commendations to welcome them. Come down tomorrow for the great memorial, great festival on the steps near the old memorial down at City Hall Lawn. Welcome Mongolians.
Also, we would like to say thank you very much, Mr. Tom Labonge. He has been providing us a very good support for Mongolian community, and also, the reason we are here is we are looking forward to establish a certain relationship with Los Angeles and Ulaanbaatar City. And also, we would like to say thank you very much. And also, we would like to say thank you very much for Mr. Herb Wesson, City Council member. Thank you.
Good job. All right, here we go.
Thank you, Mr. LaBanche, and thank you, Mongolia. Our presentations have now completed for the day. Madam Clerk, shall we please continue?
Mr. President takes us to items called special. First item will be item 21, called special for cards.
21. Mr., Ms. Perry, hold on a second, Ms. Perry.
Mr. Chair, I am concerned about losing 12 people for item 25, so if we can buck 25 up.
25, well, let's do 21. There's only one public speaker on 21. As he comes forward, Mr. Rosendahl, hold on a second, Arnold Sacks, 21. Mr. Rosendahl?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. As Mr. Sacks comes forward, I'd like the Open Magnet Charter School in Westchester to stand up, let the cameras get them. They're here to see democracy in action. Welcome to the Los Angeles City Hall, you all. Wave to the cameras, they got you going right now. The Open Magnet Charter School in Westchester. Great, 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 great. Thanks for being here today. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, Mr. Sacks, 21, and then we'll go to 25.
Thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. I held 21, I actually held 20, but I guess the card never made it up there, and I also held 6, but that card never made it up there. My concerns about actually 20 and 21 are, A, these contracts that went out, this one is for one point, or this one's for $2 million, 20 is $1.5 million. That money is left over for the extension. So, when the bids went out or when the contracts were signed, that means that this extra money was included in the, in the negotiations. And just to point out, yesterday, the City Council debated for an hour over less than $3 million. And in item number 2, I believe, you're allocating, CRA is allocating $500,000, or no, they're allocating up to $500,000 for work done on a redevelopment program. So, you have $3.5 million for consultants and $500,000 for community improvements. There's something wrong with that math. Thank you.
All right. That matter is before us on number 21, colleagues. See no one on the queue. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
And let's go to 25 for Ms. Perry. Ms. Perry, we do have cards. Would like to hear from the speakers first.
Yeah, I think, I just want to speak in favor of the BID. I believe they have their results from the city clerk that we will put on the record today. But, I've been with the city since 1990 and can remember a time when there were not, were not BIDs, particularly in the downtown area, and this has filled a great void for us. So, I believe, and Mr. Weezer, did you want the city clerk to come to the table? Did you want the city clerk to come to the table?
Yes, I have some questions of the city clerk in the city clerk's office.
Okay, is the city clerk here?
The city clerk is here. Should we hear from the public first?
Why don't you let the city clerk state the results?
All right.
Then let's take the public comment.
City clerk, you're on.
Polly Walcott, Executive Officer, Office of the City Clerk. What's before you today is the ordinance for the notice of intention. Because what this means is that we've achieved over a 50% petition level. We now will go out to the Prop 218 vote, or the Prop 218 ballot. There'll be a subsequent public hearing, and at that time, if there are sufficient, if there's not a sufficient objection, i.e. over 50% objection, then the ordinance of establishment will come back before your body. So, today just adopts the ordinance of intention.
Mr. Weezer?
Public comment first.
Public comment, okay. So, let's go to public comment on number 25. Jonathan Gerald, followed by Stella Lopez. Go ahead.
Thank you, council members. First, I need to find my comments on my iPhone. Excuse me. My name is Jonathan Gerald. I'm a secretary of the Los Angeles River Artists Business Association and the Los Angeles Downtown Arts District space, but I want to stress that my views today are my own. According to the figures provided by the Arts District bid, more than 15% of property within the Arts District bid is owned by public entities. That includes city, county, DWP, and MTA. That means that only slightly over 35% of property owned privately can impose the Business Improvement District on the whole community. That's perceived as unfair, if not undemocratic, by many. Not only do some property owners find the assessment burdensome, particularly in these economic times, but the bid managers, none of whom live in the Arts District, are effectively paid lobbyists on behalf of a small group of property owners who make it hard for the voices of more broadly-based groups in the community to be heard. For this reason, I respectfully request the process of the renewal of the bid be extremely carefully scrutinized. At the very least, the stage of the process could be delayed to permit a review of the survey results that definitely have some controversial elements in them. Thank you for your consideration.
Stella Lopez.
Council members, good Friday morning. I'm Estela Lopez, the Director of the Arts District BID. We certainly have a track record of success. Four and a half years, 30,000 public safety calls for service, 80,000 bags of trash removed from downtown sidewalks, 5,000 incidents of graffiti painted over. I can go on and on talking to you about our success in four and a half years, but what I really want to talk to you about is from the heart. We have been the subject, this renewal has been the subject, not of the, not of the ordinary controversies and differences of opinion that normally come to bear on bid renewals. This one unfortunately has turned ugly and desperate. Our detractors have launched a campaign to discredit not only our work, but our reputation. We have a track record, and we will stand by it, and the integrity of what we do is open for all to see. Our accounting firm is the accounting firm that the city clerk's office has asked to facilitate best practice of seminars for bids citywide. It is abundantly clear to us that the small circle of detractors who is speaking out against this BID is not content to allow the democratic process to go forward. Instead, they want to decide this renewal with accusations, distortions, and deeply, deeply personal attacks. But I have faith in you. I trust this council. I trust that you will review our documented record of service to the Arts District, the integrity with which we have conducted our work, and allow the 218 ballot process to move forward. Council members, I urge you, let the stakeholders of the Business Improvement District and not the voices of distortion decide whether or not to renew the Arts District BID. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank Novak, followed by Jay Novak.
Thank you, council members. My name's Frank Novak. I own Modernica. We're a furniture company with 70 employees, and I also own 12 loft units. I've been in the neighborhood for 25 years, and this bid has not improved our, our neighborhood. The improvements have happened because so many people have moved into the neighborhood and the buildings have been improved. This has not improved my own business by $1. It's increased, I mean, this is basically a tax, and our taxes have gone from, if you include the bid, from 20,000 to 31,000. So, we have a huge burden on our, on our neighborhood. What have we gotten for that money? We've gotten a garbage can at the end of the street for $33,000, and I call it a $33,000 garbage can because the other owners on our one-block-long street pay roughly $33,000. And, you know, I have seen the bike, you know, the kids on the bikes a few times, but we're talking about $1.6 million roughly, which is what the bid costs, and you could buy, you could get higher, I don't know, how many police officers, 10 or 12 police officers, and get a ridiculous amount of, you know, coverage for that, which we don't need. But, really, the worst thing about this bid is that you have the city voting against the citizens, and this is not really, this is a non-democratic process. So, what I would urge you at the very least is to put this vote off for 90 days and examine the non-democratic nature of this bid. And they've also, one more thing, we've also noticed that the city has gerrymandered in, or the bid people have gerrymandered in, a lot of city-owned property so they can beef up the city vote in this. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Jay Novak.
Hello, my name is Jay Novak. I'm a co-founder of Modernica with my brother Frank, and I feel quite disenfranchised by the, the process of installing the bid district where the government entities are voting against us, or they're voting in it in closed meetings. And so, there's, there's not really a great access to the process, so I do feel disenfranchised. More disenfranchised than myself are the condominium owners in this district, which account for 75% of the entities that vote. But, because the votes are weighted by the amount of property you own, they have the smallest leverage. These are the people that live there 24 hours a day. These are the people that have their lives invested in, in this area, their entire lives, and they are a minority in the voting power. And so, a DWP storage lot or parking lot has as much voting power as maybe 25 individuals who live in this neighborhood. That's fully disenfranchised, and this is a lack of due process and, and a corruption of democracy. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker on this particular item, Miriam Bar Zimmer.
Hello, council members. My name is Miriam, and I live in the Toy Factory Lofts on Industrial Street. I am 17 years old, and I am proud to say that along with my sister Yasmin, that we are the youngest and earliest homeowners in the Artist District. In fact, I was only 10 years old when we moved into our loft. I am here just to give you a glimpse of my experience in the neighborhood for the past seven years. I love walking and jogging in the neighborhood. I take my dog Lucy on walks daily and truly enjoy the environment. Keep in mind that I have been walking through my neighborhood since 2004, years before there was a BID. I was never bothered in any way in my neighborhood, and I can say that I am always surprised to hear that from my friends at Marbo School, who mostly live on the west side, are actually too uncomfortable to go out in their own neighborhoods. The only difference that I noticed when the BID suddenly showed up four years ago was that there was a new trash can positioned in the corner of Mateo and Industrial, three feet away from the trash can that was, that my building placed two years earlier, that was equipped with plastic bags for the residents in the neighborhood who have dogs. This did not make much sense to me. I would, I would also just like to express that our neighborhood has been one of the safest areas in Los Angeles for the past 10 years, and having kids my age riding bikes around my neighborhood does not appear to add or detract from the safety of our area. Rather than spending money on unnecessary additions to the city, this, our neighborhood could really use extra money in constructing perhaps like a small park, which would be a wonderful addition for our very industrial area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yuval Bar Zimmer.
Can I have somebody distribute that?
Good morning, or maybe good afternoon. Thank you very much for your time. My name is Yuval Bar Zimmer. I am the president of the Biscuit Loft HOA. I live on Toy Factory Lofts with my family since 2004. I also own, own or partly own over 40 parts on the Artist District. I'm not here to explain why I believe the current bid is a waste of resource, neither to explain why paying a manager $226,000 these days is ridiculous. I'm here to alert you on the following facts. The bid started the renewal effort later part of 2010 and ended up hiring a consulting firm to help them with the renewal process. They informed the board of directors with the schedule of deadlines that they needed to be able to get the renewal done in time before the current bid expires. This timetable advertised on the website and reflected in the board minutes dated 3/3/10. They submitted their plan to the city clerk on November 2010 and sent out the solicitation letters for supporting the bids in early December. They expected to send the letters of support to the city clerk in March of 2011 to allow enough time for the city clerk to verify all the letters submitted to the property that legally filed and establish that its required majority is in place. Unfortunately, the bid did not get the majority on time, as reported in the March board minutes. They only had 42%. They had to wait another month. Also, in April, they didn't have the majority. They had to wait until last month. A day after they got the 50.66%, they showed up at the city clerk and rushed it through the process. A lot of pressure was placed on city clerk to make up for the two lost months. Evidently, when something done in rush, things get overlooked. I'm submitting to you copies of five letters that were submitted, given to me by city clerk, that are not checked. The people that sent them back actually did not say that they want the bid. The total vote of these letters is 9.7%. So, in fact, the bid in front of you is trying to get it through with 40.9%.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Catherine Doran, followed by Paul Solomon.
Good afternoon. I'm Catherine Doran, a board member at Biscuit Company Lofts. Biscuit Company Lofts and Toy Factory Lofts, a community of 225 properties with about 400 occupants, were approached by the bid asking for our participation. With overwhelming homeowner support, the boards at both Biscuit and Toy voted unanimously to decline to participate in the bid. Homeowners were then mailed ballots with no explanation that the bid was being redistricted and that our buildings were being included. Of 105 homeowners in Biscuit, 13 voted yes to be included in the bid. Upon further investigation of that 13, 10 homeowners admitted that they had no idea what they were voting for. The other three did indeed support the bid. The Toy Factory Lofts also declined the initial pitch by the bid, and their voting results are even lower, with eight out of 121 units voting yes. We have no interest in the insignificant services that the bid would provide our street, and we do not agree with their unsubstantiated assessment that they are the reason the neighborhood is safer or cleaner. Rather, we would pose to you that it is through the efforts of developers with great foresight that our neighborhood has successfully become a safe, clean place for artists, businesses, and homeowners to cohabitate. We cannot understand why, with a lack of transparency surrounding the bid and the voting process, as well as dubious procedures regarding the redistricting, that the council would allow this bid renewal to proceed apace. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Paul Solomon.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Paul Solomon. I'm a resident of the Arts District and have been for 10 years. I was the vice president of LaRaba, the area's main community organization. I'm the president of the Toy Factory Homeowners Association. I'm also on the board of the CRA's Central Industrial Community Advisory Committee and have been for nine years. I'm also a real estate developer. I developed the Toy and Biscuit Lofts, directing $70 million in investment to this neighborhood. I am normally speaking in favor of business development. In this case, however, I must ask that the ballot not be certified. I'm a major stakeholder in the area. I was attracted to the area to bring and develop, to develop and bring investment to the area because of its creative character. This bid brings a corporate character to the area which is counter to the DNA of the neighborhood. It makes it a less interesting place, less interesting for investment as well. I'm the, I wanted to just finish what Yuval was saying, too. There's an additional troubling fact that the city, MTA, LAUSD, LADWP, There's an additional troubling fact that the city, MTA, LAUSD, LADWP, and LA County automatically vote yes. This creates the odd situation where a small group of owners can draw a map that includes enough government-owned properties to substantiate a bid, even if it is a small minority. Our case reflects that only 34% of the vote was placed by private owners. Furthermore, the actual residents that own property in the area have a vast majority that do not want the bid, actually 73%. A big amount of the government-owned property that voted yes does not meet the threshold of benefiting from the bid unless we decide that the LA River is a recreation area and the MTA maintenance yard that's stretched along the river should be used as a place to attract retailers. Cities should support bids when they really reflect the sentiment of the neighborhood and when the neighborhood stands to benefit. The vote of the city should not help a small group of interested owners impose their opinion and assessment on the majority. Thank you.
Our final speaker, Lily Lakish. Our final public speaker on item 25.
My name is Lily Lakish. I am an artist and the founding director of the Museum of Neon Art, which I started in my studio in the Arts District 30 years ago. I have owned my 5,000-square-foot building for more than three decades. Four and a half years ago, my neighborhood was hijacked by a few wealthy developers who, through a weighted voting system supported by 15% of city, county, and DWE properties, imposed property tax increases to provide dubious services which duplicate services already being paid for by property owners. The last time I spoke before the city council in opposition to the Arts District bid, I was threatened with a lawsuit by the attorney for the CCEA and the Arts District bid. Here's the first paragraph of the letter my attorney sent to attorney Donald Steyer. Dear Mr. Steyer, I have been retained by Lily Lakish to represent her in responding to your letter dated September 13, 2006, in which you threaten Ms. Lakish with civil prosecution for defamation if she does not provide you with evidence to aid you in your investigation of her claims regarding Central City East Association, CCEA. Specifically, you asked for evidence to support Ms. Lakish's comment to the Los Angeles City Council made during public remarks on September 12 and 13, 2006, that CCEA had threatened to interfere with land use permits requested by individual stakeholders in the proposed arts bid unless these stakeholders agreed to support the proposed bid. The level of intimidation which characterizes the tactics used by the CCEA and the Arts District bid are unconscionable. The city council of the City of Los Angeles should not support the renewal of a corrupt process which has increased bid assessments by 30% in a severe economic recession and a salary of $226,000 to the executive director of the CCEA.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That completes our public comment. Now go to Mr. Weisar.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. And I have a few questions for the clerk. My office has received a lot of emails and calls about this process. And one of them is a question people have is how are the boundaries determined for this bid? And what is the process in terms of what these boundaries were, how were they determined?
Generally speaking, in any business improvement district, if it's a property-based bid, there is a proponent group, and they must have a consultant that is in the business of putting together the business improvement districts. And again, I'm specifically talking about property-based bids. And they also must retain a engineer. And it is the engineer's report and the consultant that works with the proponent group to determine the boundaries.
So if a property owner in this process does not want to be in the bid, do they have any recourse, or the consultant determines whether they should be in it or not?
Generally, the way the state law works is that those that benefit from the services, you cannot assess anybody who does not directly benefit from the services. So the engineer has to find that the property benefits from the assessment. So then it is, you couldn't just leave somebody out just because they didn't want to be out. The boundaries, what we do at the city clerk's office is make sure that the boundaries make sense. Generally, it's easier for us if, if there's a natural boundary such as a freeway or a river or a train track, something that encloses, but that's not always the case.
What are the avenues for appeal or protest by constituents in this process?
Well, generally, what the proponent group and the bid consultant are tasked with doing is to do outreach and to have community meetings and get input as to what would best benefit the community. Once the management district plan is put together and the engineer's report is submitted, the city clerk checks it, and that's when it goes out to petition, and that's when the consultant and engineer should garner the majority of their support. If, at that point in time, they should be, the property owners should be conversing with the proponent group, I mean, there should be community meetings, there should be outreach so that everybody's concerns are heard. Obviously, it's not easy to get 100% agreement all the time.
So we are in the process, we're, we're just authorizing that process to begin, but there should be more community meetings during the vote?
We've already had the petition, the petitions, they've already hit the 50% petition level.
They already got the 50% petition.
And what the community is concerned about is that 17% of those are government properties, and it's 34 or 33%, whatever, I'm not doing the math in my head right now, is of the property owners, the remaining property owners. But it should also be stated that once they hit the 50% petition level, they don't continue to go out and get petitions, which they could do. They, once they hit the level, that meets, just as you all would run for office and get a certain petition level.
Now, when it goes out for a vote, that's what we're, the next step in this process?
That's the next step.
Do the city, government, do the government properties also count as a yes in that process?
Each different government agency has their own process. The MTA, it goes to their board. DWP, it goes to their board. I'm not sure on LAUSD, I think they have a different process. The City of Los Angeles policy is for the city clerk to vote yes.
The city, the city property votes automatic yes?
Yes.
Okay. But each other government entity is different as to whether they, how they calculate their votes, how they submit their votes?
Correct.
Okay. And so the best advice I think we would have for constituents who are in disagreement with this bid is that there will be a voting process that comes up. And in that process, people could express their, their support or their denial of this, of the bid, right?
Correct. However, it is, as they have stated, weighted toward, by state law, it's weighted by the assessment paid.
It's weighted by the assessment paid for each, each of the votes. Got it?
Correct.
Okay. And for the city, how, just generally speaking, we're an automatic yes. Is that an ordinance? Is that a city administrative code?
It's a council policy that was adopted-
Council policy, okay.
-in 1996 by the council. Only a few minutes ago, my archivist, who I thought was off today, produced the record. But it was council file 96-1972-S1 that the council adopted the policy.
All right. And you're not sure how the other government entities vote, but they have their own procedure. But you said MTA goes to the board, DWP-
DWP goes to their board.
And we're not sure what LAUSD does. Okay. Thank you. Well, thank you for that. I know there's a lot of concern about this. I am one that I certainly want to have the most open, transparent process as we move forward. I want to look at policies and procedures to make sure they are fair, and I think this has, has opened my eyes to some issues that we need to look at as a council and look to see if those are fair. But I do, I also believe in people being given the opportunity to vote on whether they would like to proceed with an issue or not. So we are at that level, and, you know, I haven't seen a bid come through here, a proposal for a bid that's been rejected. I ask that we just move forward and then, you know, see how that comes back to us. But I do think that we, as a city, would need to look at our own policies and procedures to see if they are fair or not to allow the democratic process to take place. Thank you.
Mr. Alarcon.
Council members, as the chair of the committee that oversees the processing for the, the business improvement districts, I have to tell you that this is, this is, our concern when we're looking at the petition process is, is not the quality necessarily of the, of the bid per se. Our primary concern is whether or not the process was adhered to in a way that's consistent with state law and city policy. With regard to state law, the, they set the thresholds in this case to the extent that the state threshold is 50%. The city policy is 30%, 35%.
There's a city ordinance for lower economic business improvement districts. That's 35%.
It's 35%. However, because of the state threshold, we have accepted a higher standard of 50%, meaning that in the petition process, all somebody has to do is get to 50%, and they don't have to solicit anymore. They qualify to, to have a vote on the, on the business improvement district. So in terms of that threshold, the 50% was met. With regard to the, the, the issues of the city participation, the bottom line is it is city policy to support bids. And so if we have properties which are also mandated by state law incorporated into the bid, then it is our policy that we support it. So, so we've given the city clerk authority to, to vote positively whenever a bid is offered. I would also mention that the total contributions of bids throughout the City of Los Angeles is over $30 million, and that's a significant amount of money helping us improve our, our districts. Now, having said that, some of the concerns that have been raised certainly are things that we should be concerned about. And so we, we definitely want to ensure that, that the, that there is good performance, that these dollars are used in the most effective way possible. There's always going to be opinions on this, but, but for the purposes of the petition process, we certainly just want to make sure we're adhering to all the state regs. And I believe that this, this project does. I would encourage the current, since there is already an existing bid, I would encourage them to work with the opponents of this to, to see if there are ways to, to achieve their support by virtue of providing services that they would like to see. And that's, that's something that I'm sure the council member will work with them on. But having said all that, I think that this, this bid needs to be given an opportunity to be voted upon by the community, given that the thresholds have been met. And other policy considerations, as a committee chair, I can tell you, we will review the other policy considerations that, you know, in terms of the city's participation, in terms of the city clerk making the determinations 100% of the time. Although these are city policies that have been acted on in the past, you know, I'll be happy to take a look at them again and, and see if we can improve the process as much as possible. So with that, I encourage you to support this bid.
Thank you, Mr. Alarcon. That's our final speaker. So on this matter, open the roll, close the roll, tablet to vote.
Twelve eyes.
Ms. Perry, forthwith, Madam Clerk. Next item, please.
Mr. President, that takes us to public comment.
Public comment time. And public comment, we have a few cards. Arnold Sachs, public comment.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
You're burning time, sir.
Yeah, I know. Three hours of presentations, you can't wait 30 seconds. Anyway, the good news is the mayor signed the budget, and everybody is off to the races. And yesterday, or Wednesday, the conversations that occurred in here over $3 million was mind-boggling. And it would really be nice, after you put the public that sits in here through so much abuse, you give us an opportunity to address those issues, even though they're heard in county, in committee. But two minutes of your time. But again, my question is regarding this budget, because as Councilman Parks said, this is closing out the fiscal year 2010, 2011, is what the hell happened to the $21.5 million that's going to be paid by DWP in July, August, and September? We've heard Councilwoman Hahn and Councilman Rosendahl arguing for their fire departments and the redeployment of men, and we don't have the money, and we don't have the money, and we don't have this. But DWP is paying $63.5 million, $64 million in fiscal year 2011, 2012, which means it's not part of this budget. So we can't get an explanation, or the public doesn't get an explanation on that. Then, on top of everything else, we find out that the reserve fund is $194 million, and if you take away that $64.5 million from the transfer, it comes out to $194 million. La-dee-dah. And then, on top of all that, we find out there's another holding fund that has $73 million in it. So where was the discussion on that last year? Where was the discussion on that this year? And what is that money for? Well, we don't know, but don't worry, because the council's got it under control. You're losing your parks, you're losing fire stations, but when it happens, DWP, remember, isn't losing anything. Thank you.
Dr. Williams, Dr. Clyde Williams, Walter Bechtel. Three people in the valley, we'll go to the valley next. Mr. Alarcon, pardon, sir? Personal privilege, Mr. Alarcon.
Scott, I'd like to recognize Scott Savanken, who was recently elected as the newest Los Angeles Community College District Board Member. Scott, Scott is a longtime family member in the city ranks. He worked with me in Mayor Bradley's office about 127 years ago, and so we congratulate him and applaud him for his tenacity in, in his finally accomplishing the goal of being an elected official. Congratulations, and we know that all the building programs at the Community College District will be better in short order.
He'll fix it very well. Thank you. Congratulations, Scott. Walter Bechtel, public speaker.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I wanted to say something about public housing and a law I think that needs to be passed. A lot of people are talking about the problem we're having with the economy. This is, in my opinion, I think the problem with the economy is based upon the greedy attitude that the whole government has about investing in living property. I think it needs to be against the law for people to make investment in living property. I'm talking about places like housing, apartment complexes, condominiums, and, and residential hotels, and especially residential hotels. We had a lot of problem with that. The idea is, I think it's wrong to think that an economy is doing better based upon how the prices of houses are doing well. If the prices of houses are going up, that means there's less money in the pockets of the people. If there's less monies in the pocket of the people, they're going to spend less money at the merchants. And the only people that are going to have money are these people who invest in the houses. And most of those kind of people are people that don't even live in the houses, and many times, they don't even live in the country itself. How does that help the country, our country, by allowing people to invest in places that people have to live in? If we would just make that against the law, you would see more money in the pockets of the people, and that money would stay in this country. These people who invest in these properties, oftentimes, they take, take the money and they go and invest it in their country. I know the one slumlord down there who invested in the Ford Hotel. He took and, quote, "fixed" the hotel up, and now he went and took all the money and invested it in, in casinos, and he bought property in Australia.
Thank you, Mr. Bechtel. Let's go to the San Fernando Valley. We have three speakers. Anyone in the San Fernando Valley? No one there? Three speakers, Richard, the Stan Foundation, and Bruce Darian. No one's there in the San Fernando Valley? Thank you. Let's go back to City Hall. And Madam Clerk, next item, please.
A council has motions for post-nam referral.
Post-nam referred.
That clears the desk.
Desk is cleared. Announcements, colleagues? Mr. Parks, announcements?
Yes, let me just ask for number four, forthwith.
Number four, forthwith, Mr. Parks.
Yes, and just want to advise the public of a couple of events in the Eighth District. One, ongoing meeting in the public for redistricting will be Tuesday, June 9, at the Puente Learning Center. Center in South LA, 10,000 Southwestern Avenue. It's the third in a series of meetings to advise the public about redistricting. Also, there is going to be, save the date, June 25th, Saturday, in the Lamont Park Village, will be the Eighth Annual Lamont Park Village Book Fair.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Announcements, colleagues? Announcements? Well, I have a couple announcements. The Second Annual Winnetka March for Kids, 8:30 to 11:00. Running Meet Park in Winnetka, public's invited. Also, the Valley Traffic Division, LAPD, has a car show, Still Saving Lives, at Warner Center Park, 1500 Topanga Canyon Boulevard. I understand there'll be about 300 vintage cars at that. Public's invited. That's, again, Valley Traffic Advisory Council, Eighth Annual Still Saving Lives Car Show at Warner Center Park, 1500 Topanga Canyon Boulevard in Woodland Hills. Also, the West Valley LAPD on Van Nuys at Wilbur has an open house and a carnival, and that'll be going Saturday. Public's invited. Bring your children around and meet the officers in your community. And one more item on the agenda is Operation Gratitude. If you want to show support for the military, come out and help wrap packages for our United States Military. Operation Gratitude, assemble care packages, and that will be at the National Guard Armory, 17330 Victory Boulevard in Van Nuys. Public's invited, and that's a wonderful event to help support our military. Mr. Weisar, announcements?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This Sunday, we will celebrate for the sixth year Lummis Day at Heritage Square in Highland Park, 3800 Homer Street. Councilmember Ed Reyes and myself invite you to attend the event. It celebrates contributions of Charles Lummis, who started at the Southwest Museum, the Casa de Adobe, and was a huge advocate of inclusiveness, diversity in Los Angeles over 100 years ago that we sell, the same values we celebrate today as a city. He also was a huge collector of Native American artifacts, and perhaps having collected one of the largest in this nation's history. Lummis Day Northeast, Los Angeles, Heritage Square Museum, 3800 Homer Street, for those who would like to attend this Sunday. Thank you.
On the other announcements? Seeing none. Any adjourned motions, colleagues? Adjourned motions, Ms. Hahn? Please stand for adjourned motions. Well, hold on a second, hold on. Ms. Perry?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Zine. I wanted to make an announcement tomorrow here in Council Chamber, 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM, Los Angeles Department of Water and Power and City Council Joint Meeting of Energy and Environment. So we'll have our members here with the commissioners to talk about the process that we will engage in the future on the issue of rate increases, along with a discussion regarding the Office of Accountability and the Ratepayer Advocate, and how those two come together.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Ms. Hahn, adjourned motions. Please stand for adjourned motions.
Thank you. I'd also like to make one quick announcement, too. Tomorrow, Saturday, in Wilmington, at 10:00 AM, invite everyone to come to celebrate the opening of a 30-acre park. It's called the Wilmington Waterfront Park. It is actually the long-awaited buffer between the community of Wilmington and the industrial uses of the Port of Los Angeles. Many in that community have waited a long time. So 10:00 AM tomorrow morning, we invite everyone to attend with us at that great ribbon-cutting. Colleagues, I'd like us to adjourn today. I want to start with the adjournment for Lee Lilian Marticich. Many of you know my friend Stephanie Marticich. This is her mother. And Stephanie, many of you remember, she was my pioneer woman. Stephanie comes down here many times. She was just here a couple weeks ago advocating on behalf of a historical monument in San Pedro. She's the founder and the director of the L.A. Harbor International Film Festival, and I will tell you, a devoted daughter to her mother. So it was with great sadness that her mother passed on Monday unexpectedly. And Lee was a retired Los Angeles Unified School District Elementary School teacher. She was a community advocate. She was the daughter of European immigrants, Lou, called the sweet barber of Beacon Street, and Anne Schur. She was preceded in death by her parents and the father of her children in lifetime love, Joseph Marticich Jr. She was a lifetime resident of San Pedro. She attended Bandini Street Elementary School, Dana Junior High School, and San Pedro High School, where she graduated at the age of 16 in 1941. She attended Compton College, San Jose State, and the University of Southern California, where she earned her Bachelor of Science degree and lifetime teaching credential. In 1944, she married her high school sweetheart, Joseph, before he went on his Navy commission in the South Pacific. As a young mother, she taught school in the late 1940s, returning to her alma mater, Bandini Street Elementary. And after the birth of her first daughter, Stephanie, she devoted her time to home, family, and community. While her children were young and growing, she was actively involved with her husband in the family business Franco-Italian Packing Company in San Pedro. She was actively involved with numerous social philanthropic community organizations in return to teaching in the late 1960s at the San Pedro Adult School and Gulf Avenue Elementary School in Wilmington. She'll always be remembered for her elegant style, her witty humor, her eloquent diction, and her gracious manner. She actually heard from former students who thanked her for her influence and thanked her for her guidance in introducing current events and playing classical music to calm us after lunchtime on the playground. She's survived by her children, Joseph Marticich III, Stephanie, Deborah Marticich, special nieces, Kathleen Saldana, Nettie Rose Schur, and numerous nieces and nephews and great friends. And I will tell you, I've got to know Mrs. Marticich very well through Stephanie. But again, Stephanie was a devoted daughter, 24/7 to her mother, and even when her mother had some health complications, Stephanie was so good about bringing her to all of our community events in San Pedro. Mrs. Marticich always was impeccably dressed, accessorized, and always had a kind, thoughtful word to say to everyone. She leaves an incredible legacy in the harbor area, none the least of which is, of course, her three children, Stephanie, Mike, and Deborah. So her services will be, I believe, next Tuesday at McMurney's Mortuary. She has a much longer obituary in the paper, and I hope people take the time to read it. She truly was an amazing, amazing lady in the harbor area. I'd also like us to adjourn in memory of Crispino Anthony Di Ruggero, who passed away at the young age of 51. He was the husband of Maricela Caraballo's husband, who works for the Port of Los Angeles, and he was taken away from his family just days before his 52nd birthday, which would have been Wednesday. He was a man of integrity, loved his family dearly, loved to travel, always saw the best in people. He attended Catholic school during his childhood and graduated from St. Edward's High School in 1977. He got his real estate license after he went to Cleveland State University. He did so well in selling real estate that he eventually left college to work full-time managing a real estate office. His family moved to Torrance, and in no time, he obtained a California real estate license, and he and his two partners formed Future Estates and Development. And by the early 1990s, this company had become one of the top 10 development companies in Los Angeles County. Chris will be remembered for his generosity. He loved to be able to take care of family and friends and to show how much he appreciated them. It was first to open up his home to a friend in need. He always made you laugh, and when he walked in a room, you were in for a good time. He was an authentic soul. He's survived by his sweet wife, Maricela, two children, Ashley and Joseph, his mother, Emanuela, his mother-in-law, Fidelia, his sister-in-law, Blanca, brother-in-law, Reiner, and many nieces and nephews. I do remember when Maricela married him, she felt like she had found her soulmate. They were only married, I think, a short eight years before he was taken from her. Our sympathies go out to Maricela, as this will be a very, very tough transition for her to go on without her beloved husband.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Adjourned motions, colleagues? Ms. Perry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to adjourn in memory of David A. Wilcox, who began his education at the University of Michigan with a bachelor's and a master's in history, and ultimately received his master's in public administration from Harvard University School of Design. He began his teaching career at UCLA in 1962 and spent two years as a Peace Corps volunteer lecturing at the University of IFE at Baden. He later served as an adjunct professor for 31 years at the University of Southern California. His career in committee service spanned decades. He, this is the most notable thing that we should remember about him, he directed over 13 redevelopment projects in Los Angeles for the Redevelopment Agency as a senior planner and director of planning. Among his many accomplishments, he led a multi-year effort to define the economic impact of the 1984 Olympics in Los Angeles and led intensive planning efforts to convert seven surplus military bases and two former government-owned contractor-operated industrial sites for public and private use. He is survived by his wife Carol Wilcox, daughter Wendy Gerhardt, son-in-law Tony Gerhardt, and grandson Zachary Gerhardt. Services will be held at the USC University Club on Tuesday, June 28th, at 4:00 PM.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. That concludes adjourned motions for today, concludes our council meeting for today. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. This concludes our meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. It will resume next Tuesday. Have a lovely weekend, signing off from City Hall.